...water body, so it is something to be respected.
Outgoing L.A. City Councilman Ed Reyes has led the effort to reopen the river after violent floods forced disclosure in the 1930s. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers added concrete and turned it into a flood-control channel, but in recent years has worked with the city and conservationists on a compromise.
To do more ecosystem restoration, to do more recreation without giving up the safety and the flood risk management, the flood control.
Though you'll be pretty much on your own, rangers will be patrolling the area to help ensure safety. Some general rules to follow: no motorized boats, no inner tubing, and children under 13 must wear life vests.
But finally, what really is here is that the kids in the area that don't have access to parks, that don't have access to playgrounds, will now have a recreational area to enjoy.
It's open to the public seven days a week from sunrise to sunset. In Elysian Valley, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
For detailed access routes to the recreation area, log on to larriverrecreation.org. And another project outgoing Councilman Reyes is proud of: a busy intersection in his district susceptible to pedestrian and car accidents finally gets a new traffic light. It's a victory for the whole community that's taken a mother's tenacity to achieve.
On November 29, 1993, a drunk driver at the intersection of Sitchell Street and North Broadway struck Cindy Gonzalez. 14-years-old at the time, Gonzalez spent 15 days in a coma as a result of her injuries.
My daughter Cindy here, she was hurt and she was also had been, she had been also a student at Sacred Heart. And there's been so many accidents throughout the years and now like, and two years ago when this man crossed the street and he died, I knew then it was time to act.
Councilman Ed Reyes credits a mother's love, and this mother in particular, in helping to make sure this day would come, the day when a traffic signal was installed at Sitchell and North Broadway.
Yeah, three's gathered 1,700 signatures, was very focused for a good number of years and never gave up.
An emotional day for community members Beatrice and her daughter Cindy. Nearly 20 years after the accident, Cindy, now in her 30s, is marking a milestone as the city flips the switch on the new signal.
I'm kinda excited, I'll be able to finally cross the street since the accident and feel safe.
And the hope is, so will the children who attend Cindy's alma mater, Sacred Heart Elementary School, just a block and a half away from this busy intersection.
As you see the children here, they cross the street every school day, so now they can cross safely looking at the lights.
For Councilman Reyes, this project, one of his last as council member representing the city's first district, takes on personal significance.
My sister Letty was struck here at the very same intersection in the 70s. But I want to tell you that because of budget constraints, it's been a very, very difficult project to finish.
As the councilman prepares to leave the job he's had for the past 12 years, he says being able to celebrate the installation of a traffic signal where his own sister was struck decades ago is the cherry on top of the cake. Councilman Reyes reminded the kids that regardless of the signal, they need to look both ways before crossing. A horse trail here in the city has gotten some much-needed work done recently. City leaders join the local equestrian community to celebrate these latest improvements. Yes, there are horse trails here in the city of Los Angeles, including the Toyon Horse Trail here at 5050 Mountain Hollywood Drive at Griffith Park, but it wasn't always a horse trail.
Our past is a bit colorful. Yes, we used to bury a lot of solid waste trash in this place and surrounded by so much natural beauty. But Tom has been a tireless champion of reclaiming this land and we have heeded his call.
Toyon Canyon operated as a landfill between 1957 and 1985, but it took another 23 years to completely shut down operations. The Bureau of Sanitation began construction in early 2012 to retrofit the site, making it a recreational space for hikers and equestrians to enjoy.
One of the prettiest sights I saw was in the zoo one night, and there was a stream, a stream of horses coming right across one of these benches, one of these ridges, and it was all in silhouette.
Improvements to the Toyon Horse Trail include a new water trough, landscaping, and signage.
We hereby dedicate this for all horses, Slim. You're the one. Here, here. Toyon Canyon.
And city leaders promise the Toyon Horse Trail is here to stay, with more improvements to come that will restore the canyon's natural beauty for all to enjoy. Koreatown is home to one of the largest Korean populations in the U.S., yet this L.A. community has never had a senior center until now. Anita Bennett takes us to the opening of the long-awaited facility.
These seniors are celebrating a major milestone, the first-ever senior center geared towards Korean-Americans in Los Angeles.
This is truly historic-making event for the entire Koreans, have their own great place to enjoy and share the American and Korean cultures together. This is really, a really exciting moment.
Daniel and dozens of others recently gathered for a special luncheon marking the grand opening.
We have many Korean-American seniors, they're gonna have a place to enjoy, so this is the place we got to have.
Yet it took over six years to make the center a reality. Part of the problem: raising enough money to get it off the ground. Then the city stepped in and helped secure more than $1 million from the now-defunct Community Redevelopment Agency.
When the city lost control of the CRA, they brought in like a group of trustees. Initially, they decided not to fund this project, but they, a lot of support from Mealy and others, and we were able to get the final money that they need.
According to the latest census, more than 20,000 senior citizens live in Koreatown. The center will offer classes and activities in Korean and English to make them feel at home.
It's a place of like gathering where it's safe, and it's also a place for people to meet friends, you know, senior citizens, instead of staying home, they can hang out and meet other friends here.
Some of the folks here say they plan to make this a regular stop. Are you planning to come here much?
As much as I can, yes.
The center is large enough to accommodate up to 250 people, and they'll offer a host of services, including free lunch, some medical care, and even dance classes. In Koreatown, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
Before the center opened, area seniors often gathered in a parking lot of a McDonald's in Koreatown. A popular exhibit at the L.A. Zoo temporarily gets a new name. Outgoing Mayor V helps extend a deal with the Chinese company that operates at the port of L.A., and a school shares its new playground with the community. These stories and more in City Beat. These gorillas at the Los Angeles Zoo help bring awareness about the plight of their relatives in the wild, which include poaching and habitat loss. But on a recent weekend, they were focused on something a bit more lighthearted, helping to promote Nintendo 3D's new games. And just for that weekend, the Gorilla Reserve was temporarily renamed Donkey Kong Country Returns 3D at Campo Gorilla Reserve.
The game's really cool and you have a lot of adventures in here.
The new games are violent. They're too much violence, too much blood, too much gun shooting. This is wonderful for kids.
Families got to enjoy visiting the real gorilla reserve as well as taking pictures with the costumed Donkey Kong character. Outgoing Mayor Antonio Villaregosa recently went on a trade mission to China, his last trip overseas as mayor. And while there, the mayor announced an extended lease agreement with the Chinese shipper. Chinese firm Yang Ming's lease at the port of L.A. has been lengthened another nine years to 2030, which the mayor says could bring as much as $525 million in revenue. In return, port officials have agreed to add $122 million in improvements to the wharf the firm uses. The city is committed to building new parks and refurbishing existing ones, but it's also partnering with the Los Angeles Unified School District to open up school playgrounds to the community at large. And that's the case over at Vine Street Elementary School, where Councilmember Tom Labonge recently helped debut a new play structure that both students at the school and residents will be able to enjoy. The park is open to the public on weekends during the school year and seven days a week during the summer. As temperatures continue to rise, a reminder to make sure you protect your pets from the heat. The city's Animal Services Department says that when it is hot for you, it is even hotter for dogs and cats, who do not sweat through their skin but through panting. So make sure your pet has plenty of fresh water to drink. And just like with children, it is dangerous to leave your dog or cat in a car for even five minutes. And if your dog spends time in the yard, make sure there is plenty of shade to keep him or her comfortable.
You don't have to go to a museum to take in an exhibit. In fact, all you have to do is visit the L.A. Central Library, where currently on display is an exhibit about an artist who blazed trails in the art of film.
2001: A Space Odyssey, Lolita, Doctor Strangelove. These are decades-old films that still resonate with film audiences and that have cemented their place in pop culture and film history. The exhibit Stanley Kubrick: A Life in Film is on display now at the L.A. Central Library's Art Department atrium until June 30. The exhibit features a small collection of poster and still photography images from the director's film works.
When we first heard about the exhibit at LACMA, which is a major exhibit on Kubrick's work, we were really excited and we wanted to do something here that would tie in with that exhibit, but it would also feature the multitude of resources that we have here at Central Library.
Whether listening to the musical themes of 2001, viewing his symbolic use of red, or exploring the universe through recent and historic images from the NASA archives, this multimedia exhibit both takes you back to the films themselves as well as furthers the dialogue.
It's very inspiring. We've been sort of overdosing on the space station stuff lately with the expedition returning and the new one going up. So, yeah, it's been really exciting. So it was kind of fun to walk in here and see all this stuff here. Actually, we just watched 2001 again, too, so we've been in a big-space mode lately.
The curator of this exhibit says what sets Stanley Kubrick apart from his contemporaries was all in the detail.
For instance, with the Barry Lyndon film, he researched 18th-century painting, lifestyle, furniture, almost anything you can touch on.
Kubrick's films, including 13 full-length ones, provoked, challenged, and sometimes confounded. And they continue to do so today nearly 15 years after the filmmakers' passing. The Central Library has also been screening some of Kubrick's films during this exhibit. You can still catch the last of the film screenings, Doctor Strangelove, on June 29 at 1:00 p.m. at the library's Meeting Room A. In this week's List of Things to Do: A hike with a positive message, fun at night in Chinatown, and the annual Beastly Ball at the L.A. Zoo. If you're an avid hiker and looking for a fun group hike, look no further than the ultimate fun hike up Mountain Hollywood on Saturday, June 15 from 8 to 11 a.m. On average, between 100-plus hikers of all ages and fitness levels attend. Meet at Roosevelt Cafe at 2650 North Vermont Canyon Road. This event bills itself as positive-minded with motivation sessions at the summit overlooking beautiful views of L.A. You'll also stop for some healthy grub from Cafe Gratitude Hollywood at the end of the hike and some Jamba Juice as well. The event is free with passes available by going to summitmotivation.com. You can also sign up on the day of the hike at the park, but a voluntary $10 donation is suggested per person. L.A. Chinatown joins forces with KCRW 89.9 FM to present Chinatown Summer Nights on three separate Saturdays this summer, the first of which takes place on Saturday, June 15 from 5 to 11:55 p.m. The party featuring music, food, art, and culture takes place in Chinatown from 9:42 to 9:51 North Broadway. Listen to great live bands on the L.A. Weekly stage and dance the night away, or nosh at gourmet food trucks and great Chinatown restaurants. Shop at the L.A. Craft Experience Market and at Chinatown shops, or experience live cooking demos, hands-on cultural workshops, and much more. Go to chinatownsummersnights.com for details and other dates. This is an annual event that's got a lot of bite. The L.A. Zoo's Beastly Ball takes place this year on Saturday, June 15, starting at 6 p.m. You'll get to stroll through the zoo's lush grounds, come face-to-face with the zoo's animal residents, and enjoy a beastly feast. There will also be a silent auction, dancing, and entertainment. The L.A. Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. To purchase individual tickets or for additional event information, call 323-644-4753. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. But before the Beastly Ball takes place on June 15, the zoo gave a sneak peek of the beastly feast that will await attendees. Anita Bennett was there for a look at this menu with a bite.
As these excited preschoolers get up close with some of the L.A. Zoo's reptilian residents, just a few feet away, Zoo Brass and celebrity supporter Betty White are getting ready for the annual Beastly Ball.
Oh, how cute can you be?
White hosted a preview of the menu that will be dished up at the gathering on Saturday, June 15.
Today we have a, we're calling it a cotton-top coconut cupcake in honor of this cute little monkey here.
Yummy cupcakes and several other popular L.A. eateries will be donating some of their favorite dishes to help raise money for the zoo's soon-to-open Rainforest of the Americas exhibit.
We love the zoo. We have done this for three years, and we feel it's really important to give back to the community.
One restaurant even whipped up a plate of zoo-themed pasta.
We have some tortelloni, homemade tortelloni stuffed with seafood in a lobster sauce.
City Councilman Tom Labonge, whose district includes the zoo, says the facility is about much more than just cute animals.
The Los Angeles Zoo and Botanical Gardens is an educational institute for the conservation efforts that we do, and I'm very proud of those who work in the zoo.
TV legend Betty White has worked with the zoo for more than 50 years.
We always have a project, and we're always building toward that. But then to look around at like the gorilla exhibit, the chimpanzee exhibit, all the things we've worked so hard for, and to see them as realities, it's exciting.
The Beastly Ball is put together by the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association, or GLAZA, and tickets are going for $1,000 per person. Traditionally, this event raises about $1 million each year, and organizers are hoping all this food will inspire donors to dig a little deeper into their pockets. At the Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
I just wanted to introduce Jackie Mustafa, one of the great engineers from the Department of Transportation, who came over here to tell me about improvements in one of our districts. Let's give Jackie a big hand right here. Good job, Jackie.
Thank you.
Good morning. It is Friday, June 14th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Just for the record, I am not in my usual suit and tie because we're celebrating Filipino Independence Day. And so, I wanted to show my respect to each and every one of you, and I hope it's okay. It's the best one I've got. So, with that said, I'd like to see if Mr. Labange, if you would come here.
Okay.
We don't have a quorum as of yet, so now I know how many members listened to me on Wednesday when I said they need to be here before 10:15. But I have a presentation of a delightful puppy named Louis. Louis Louis.
Mr. Weston now will go to the center of the John Farrell Chambers where all will be able to see this great program with our Animal Services Department of Adopt a Pet. Mr. Weston and Louis Louis. Let's have a hand for Louis Louis.
Let's get a close-up on Louis. Anyway, this is by, I always love Fridays, period, but this Friday is a special one because it's Adopt a Dog Friday, Adopt a Pet Friday. And we in the city of Los Angeles, I've been doing this for many years, and we have a 100% adoption rate where it relates to the dogs and puppies that we have tried to find homes for. So, I'd like to keep that 100% record going, and I would hope that somebody here in the chambers would want to take Louis home and make him an addition to their family. So, Louis is a mixed Chihuahua. He's a year and a half, so this is as big as he gets, and he's ready to go. He has his shots. If you want him, you can take him home right now. So, I know this may not sound like a real important thing, Pet Adoption Friday, but it is. We have so many animals, and we do the very best we can to find homes for them, but sometimes we cannot. So, I'm not asking you to just adopt a pet, a companion animal. I'm asking you to save a life. And so, and it makes you feel good, I can admit that. All of my dogs are rescue dogs. I will not tell you how many that I own, but if you have one, it's time for you to get two. So, I'm hopeful that somebody will want to take little Louis Louis home and present him to their husband, wife, or child. Now, I'm joined by Anna from Animal Controls, and Anna, I'm going to ask you to kind of walk him a little bit up and down so people could look at him. And with that said, Mr. President, I will allow you to present your, I think you and Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Weezer, are you ready to make a presentation right now? All right, we're going to switch seats here, and Mr. Weston, our president, will sit here, but also we'll have a very special presentation for the Filipino-American community of Los Angeles, a very special, and some very special honorees. Mr. Weezer, will you report to the center podium, please? Thank you so much.
Mr. Labange is going to open it up, right?
Yeah, I just do my thing here. She's supposed to be receiving it.
Oh, okay.
This is the notes I just got.
All right, so I'll wait for... Hello, how are you? Hello, how are you?
Okay, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Labange.
Habagahu Maga, Mr. President, how is that, Eddie? Am I okay, Eddie? Habagahu Maga, greetings and good morning to everyone here. It's very special. I'm joined here by the great councilman of the 14th District. This is the 115th anniversary of the independence of the Philippines, and it's a very special day. We're honored here to have the council general who's with us, who I'll introduce momentarily, but also I want to call on Mr. Weezer to say a few remarks, and we're also honored to do this on behalf of Mayor-elect Councilman Eric Garcetti. As you know, now that he's elected to that post, he's busy preparing for the transition. Let's give Mayor-elect Garcetti a big hand.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Labange. This is really a great pleasure to be here once again, and this year it's a very special year. It's the 115th anniversary of the Philippine independence, and we have a lot to be proud of here in the city of Los Angeles. As we know, we are one of the most diverse cities in the world, and we have one of the largest Filipino communities outside of the Philippines, and we love to celebrate that, but not only celebrating our employees in the city of Los Angeles, but also all the Filipino-Americans who have made a contribution to our city and to our country. We are joined today, as Councilmember Labange said, by Helen Barber de la Vega, our council general. Welcome, welcome to the city of Los Angeles Council Chambers. And also want to give a huge welcome to Cora Aragon Soriano. She is always with us and part of the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, very active organization. We want to give you a very big thank you for that. Let's give her and the association a big round of applause. Thank you so much. And last but not least, you know, we have celebrated a few years ago when our Filipino World War II veterans were given a great victory when the US government gave them partial reparation payment that they were entitled to for fighting on our nation's behalf. We celebrated that, but we continue to celebrate all the contributions that Filipinos have made to the United States. We have a lot of great people and a lot of things in common with Latinos, for example, because Filipinos were some of the co-founders for the United Farm Worker Movement that started, and also one of our greatest movies, La Bamba, was played by a Filipino, Lou Diamond Phillips. Many of you remember him when he played our famous Ritchie Valance from The Valley. And we also have, for those youngsters out there, Mix Master Mike, the founding member, and I didn't know this, he was a founding member of the very famous Beastie Boys. And so, we have a lot of Filipino-Americans and Filipinos who've contributed so much to our country, not only defending this country during World War II and celebrating democracy, but many other things as we move forward. So, thank you so much. I am honored to represent Igoroc and a portion of northeast Los Angeles where we have one of the largest concentrations of Filipinos in the city. And let me tell you, we celebrate a lot of things up there. We celebrate strong community, family, and those are values that the Filipino-American community and Filipinos celebrate as well. So, thank you so much. We look forward to next year's celebration, the 116th, and many, many more. Congratulations.
And as this is, and Cora, you look fabulous and so stunning as you always do, but this is so special about, when you mentioned family. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to give a tour to the Los Angeles Historical Society Council General, and we went right up to the Hollywood sign above it, up at Mount Lee. And on the way up, who did I see? About 15 young Filipino young people hiking as a family affair, as a friend affair. Throughout the city, you see that all the time, and you know how to have a good time and enjoy and love community, and that's what's special about the Filipino community. And I know Mr. Garcetti is so special, and I know Mitchell Farrell, Councilman-elect, is so in tune with historic Filipino town, which is all part of the towns, and we're going to honor another town in a minute here, but from Chinatown to Little Tokyo to historic Filipino town to Thai Town, as I said, then to, I want to make them all, I want to not miss one of them there. El Pueblo, Little Ethiopia, every neighborhood, we're all together as people, which is Koreatown, that's what I wanted to say there. Right there, Koreatown, your office is there, it is so special. But to take time, that's the key of Los Angeles. Los Angeles Council General is a city of great diversity. People from all over the world live in Los Angeles and work for the city of Los Angeles. And we're going to honor some few people here in just a moment that I want to call out that, but this is the official proclamation that salutes the 150th anniversary of Philippine independence, a great friend of the United States, a great friend of Los Angeles. So, Mr. Weezer and I want to present this to you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, and also you say a few words before we talk about our honoree. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Council General Maria Helen de la Vega, who is one of the top council generals of her country. She was previously in Milmar. She also represents the largest consulate corps, is that correct, Eva? The largest consulate corps within the world next to Hong Kong and New York is Los Angeles. Please welcome Council General de la Vega. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. The Honorable President Weston and our honorable members of the city council, thank you very much for this tribute and recognition on the occasion of the 115th anniversary of the proclamation of Philippine independence. You just do not know how much this means to our community. We have 130,000 residents and really close to 10% of the city employees here in Los Angeles, and we are very, very grateful for giving us an opportunity every year to share our heritage through our Independence Day activities. I would just like to mention that we just had a very wonderful celebration last Saturday, June 8th, the first ever, first ever independence parade and cultural festival at the historic Philippine town that was spearheaded by the Philippine Council General, and this was because our community was clamoring for it. And I could just say, thank you so much for the support given by the office of Eric Garcetti and of course, the office of Honorable Mayor Antonio Villaregosa for giving us the opportunity to have that wonderful event that brought close to 1,500 participants representing the different sectors of the community, the government, the city employees, businessmen, service groups, cause-oriented groups, and the Filipino-American youth, which will form a very important sector in advancing relations between the Philippines and the United States in the next decade. So, again, sincerely on behalf of the Philippine government and the entire Corps of the Philippine Council General and our community here, thank you so much for this recognition. Maraming salamat po, mabuhay.
Thank you for those kind words. Mr. Rosendahl.
Before you get up, Mr. Rosendahl, relax for a minute because I know you'll stand for a while. We want to hear from Cora first. Please let Cora say a few words. Thank you.
Mabuhay. Councilmember Weston, President Weston and honorable council members, thank you very much for this opportunity. We truly, truly are grateful every year that you recognize our freedom, our 115th Philippine Independence Day celebration. Opportunity also to thank, I mean, we are graced with the presence of our council general, Barber, and Deputy Council General Danny Spiridu and Wilma Bautista, and also our elected officials and community leaders. But I would like to mention, thank you also for giving opportunity for the high-level Filipinos. Please keep on promoting Filipinos.
Let's finish first. That's how it works. Good job, Cora.
Angeles, Ed Angeles is here, and also like, Romel.
We've got him on.
Everybody is here, and thank you very much, of course, to you for sponsoring this, and also Councilmember Weezer and Alarcon and Mayor-elect Garcetti, thank you very much. And you are all invited to our reception from 11:30 to 1:00. We have good, good Filipino food. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen...
Before Mr. Rosendahl gets up, I've got to say that they did want to give great praise for this person here who's been busy so hard, our city clerk, June Lagmay. Give her a hand right there. Eddie Angeles, Eddie, get in here, Eddie, right here. Deputy City Engineer, also head of Makai, Makati Sister City for Los Angeles.
So, Mr. Weezer and I want to present this to you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. And also, you say a few words before we talk about our honoree. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Council General Maria Helen de la Vega, who is one of the top Council Generals of her country. She was previously in Milmar. She also represents the largest Consulacor, is that correct? The largest Consulacor within the world, next to Hong Kong and New York is Los Angeles. Please welcome Council General de la Vega. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. The Honorable President Wesson and our honorable members of the city council, thank you very much for this tribute and recognition. On the occasion of the 115th anniversary of the proclamation of Philippine independence, you just do not know how much this means to our community. We have 130,000 residents and really close to 10% of the city employees here in Los Angeles. And we are very, very grateful for giving us an opportunity every year to share our heritage through our Independence Day activities. I would just like to mention that we just had a very wonderful celebration last Saturday, June 8th. The first ever, first ever independence parade and cultural festival at the Historic Philippine Town that was spearheaded by the Philippine Council General. And this was because our community was clamoring for it. And I could just say, thank you so much for the support given by the office of Eric Garcetti and of course, the office of Honorable Mayor Antonio Villaregosa for giving us the opportunity to have that wonderful event that brought close to 1,500 participants representing the different sectors of the community, the government, the city employees, businessmen, service groups, cause-oriented groups, and the Filipino-American youth, which will form a very important sector in advancing relations between the Philippines and the United States in the next decade. So, again, sincerely, on behalf of the Philippine government and the entire Corps of the Philippine Council General and our community here, thank you so much for this recognition. Maraming salamat po, mabuhay.
Thank you for those kind words. Mr. Rosendahl.
Before you get up, Mr. Rosendahl, relax for a minute because I know you'll stand for a while. We want to hear from Cora first. Please let Cora say a few words. Thank you.
Mabuhay. Councilmember Wesson, President Wesson and honorable Council Members, thank you very much for this opportunity. We truly, truly are grateful every year that you recognize our freedom, our 115th Philippine Independence Day celebration. Opportunity also to thank, I mean, we are graced with the presence of our Council General, Barber, and Deputy Council General Danny Spiridu and Wilma Baltista, and also our elected officials and community leaders. But I would like to mention, thank you also for giving opportunity for the high-level Filipinos. Please keep on promoting Filipinos.
Let's finish first, that's how it works.
Angeles, Ed Angeles is here and also like, Romel. Everybody is here. And thank you very much, of course, to you for sponsoring this and also Councilmember Weezer and Alarcon and Mayor-Elect Garcetti. Thank you very much. And you are all invited to our reception from 11:30 to 1:00. We have good, good Filipino food. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, before Mr. Rosendahl gets up, I got to say that they did want to give great praise for this person here who's been busy so hard, our city clerk. June Lagmay, give her a hand right there. Eddie Angeles, Eddie, get in here, Eddie, right here. Deputy City Attorney, also head of Makai, Makati Sister City for Los Angeles. Give Eddie a big hand. And the Deputy Mayor, Romel Pascal, Romel, Romel, get up here. He's done so much, he's made the mayor look good. The mayor's a good-looking guy.
You have other members.
And where's Deborah? Where's Deborah, right here? Deborah's not here from the General Services Department? She's taking care of the mayor.
Why don't you let me call on the other members and you'll find out who's here and who's not.
We're taking care of them.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, first of all, thank you, Tom. You're the most amazing I-Love-L-A person that we have ever met. And your interest in connecting LA to the planet is not only genuine from your heart, but the truth is, we are Los Angeles, the Megalopolis of the earth. And I stand up every time the Filipino group comes up because frankly, when I was the president of the California Cable Association, I went to that great country. I interviewed your president in the White House. And I saw everybody with cell phones, and this is before we had them here in the States. And that's the way people communicated from one island to the other. And you could get on the cellphone and bring a flash flood of 500 people just out of nowhere. So, I saw a democracy that was quite exciting and interesting building right there when I had the honor and privilege of being there. So, I love the Philippines. God bless you all, and thanks for making LA the great city it is. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Congressman. I just want to rise and thank my colleagues for this presentation. I want to honor the Filipino community, not here in Los Angeles, but internationally, for all the work you do. The city employees here have been amazing. I want to thank Eddie for all his service in the City Attorney's Office throughout the years. June, thank you, June, for your stewardship and making sure we get all our documents and everything stays in order. Romel has been just amazing when it comes to the River Corridor. He has done the heavy lifting in the mayor's office. He has been able to maintain that consistency, continuity, where we can see the events we did. The other day, when we had the canoeing and folks in the kayaks, Romel was there and humble as ever. We had to convince him to sit in the front with us. And I am inspired by his energy, but his humbleness says a lot about how he truly feels about the city and our communities. So, I want to thank Romel for all your hard work and everything you've done. I believe you've been one of the unsung heroes. So, I appreciate everything you've done. So, again, thank you, Tom. Thank you all, and let's enjoy a great holiday. Thank you so much.
Back to you, Mr. Labange.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. It is Independence Day, but I truly want to thank the Filipino-Americans who served the healthcare industry and hospitals throughout Southern California, doctors all the way through. It's the Filipinos who are there helping those in great need. So, I got to put a plug in for that. So, Mr. President, as authorized by the great signature of Herb Wesson Jr. and the city council, we hereby salute the 150th anniversary of Filipino independence. We're going in the back. Cora, get in here, get in here. Now, I order the delegation up to the president's desk to get a picture because he's the best dressed man in Los Angeles today. And we'll clear the area. We're all going in the back.
Aren't you going to take, are you going to take them in the back, Mr. Labange? Okay, I'll meet you back there.
Mr. Labange, you can only order things if you're sitting in that seat up there.
I order the guy from Cilejion every day.
Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Please call the roll.
Alarcon Buscano, Englander Garcetti, Weezer, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Krikorian moves, Park seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves, Englander seconds, next.
Items, excuse me, Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 2 to July 23rd and to continue Item 7 to June 18th.
Okay, without objection, so ordered. Next.
Item 1 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 7.
Any cards?
No cards. A motion is required.
Okay, I'll make the motion on Mr. Reyes's behalf, seconded by Zion. Oh, I got you since CD 1, I'm sorry. They need a motion, Richard. Okay, we'll hold this. Next.
Items 3 through 7 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members' specials. No one's on the queue, so let's, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next section.
Items 8 through 15 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. Cards.
Cards on Item 9, 10, 12, 13, and 14.
Okay, we'll hold those items. Specials, members. Sergeant, what item is that card on? Okay, on Item 1. All right, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And the ordnance for Item 8 will be held over one week for a second reading.
Okay, unless, we will do that unless we get an additional member here. Okay, with that said, let's move on to the first item.
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Item 16 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, no, we still have another item, or Item 16.
Mr. President, I believe that amending motion is forthcoming as well.
Maybe Mr. Coretts can tell me.
I'd like to call Item 16 special.
Okay, we will hold that for Mr. Coretts. Okay, so now, let's vote.
Mr. President, that takes Council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, well, with that said, let's go to Mr. Rosendahl. Are you ready with your presentation? Okay.
L.A. Business Today, come on up. Great, great. Mr. President, good morning. L.A. Business Today. Many of you know, when I was in the cable business, I had the pleasure and the privilege of producing and hosting a series of public affairs shows to inform and educate and connect people to the issues of the day. It was a lot of fun, and in that position, I was able to produce and host 3,500 shows. Bob and Sharon were regulars on the show. Bob was a big CBS, big shot anchor. Sharon has a very articulate, intelligent, perceptive way of asking questions. The two of them are a husband and wife, so you get two for the price of one. And the two of them would come on the show in various ways and say various things over those years that I was there. When I left the cable business, fortunately, Bob, because of his skill and professionalism and anchor, continued to do a show there, as did Sharon, and continued to work. Then they approached me when I became a government official, and they asked me would I sponsor them on Channel 35 or 36, but get their message out. Of course, I'm not reading my notes because I don't need any notes on this. I've known these two a long time. And as they inform and educate and bring the business community forward, we learn. And now, we are in the worst of economic times. We're bouncing back since the Great Depression. But a lot of their guests have discussed those issues, and they've talked about it and dissected them, again, empowering and connecting us to the issues as part of public service, which is what it should be. And our Channel 35 and 36, many of you know, was created with the intent of informing and connecting people to the issues. So, I want to congratulate them on their 100th show that they have put together over the period of the last, a short period of time. And we've all been informed and educated by it. And I'd like Tony to come on up and let's pass them out. And I will ask Bob and Sharon to say a few words and tell us who are these folks with them. And I'm going to read one of each just for the record. And it says, "On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to congratulate L.A. Business Today on the production of 100 shows on L.A.'s City View, Channel 35. The board of Channel 35 approved production of the show on October 24th, 2008. And since then, the show has made a difference in supporting the voices of business leaders across the city. I commend co-hosts and co-producers Sharon and Bob Jimenez, along with their talented crew, for maintaining journalistic integrity and exceptional production standards. The internationally award-winning television talk show has provided a forum and a unique media opportunity to discuss the health of the local economy during the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression. While many experienced incredible loss, the positive discussions about business gave Angelino's hope. And for that, I'm sincerely grateful. Thank you very much."
Thank you very much.
And Sharon, why don't you start off?
Thank you so much, Phil.
Thank you very much. And I'll just get to the side while you start bringing the rest up.
Mr. President and members of the L.A. City Council and the viewing public of Channel 35 and Channel 36, Bob and I have been very honored to work with Councilman Bill Rosendahl, who has supported the only TV talk show about business in Los Angeles. It was our idea to bring the voices of people, not to do a TV talk show about business that talks about numbers and Wall Street, but that talks about what really propels business, and that is people. People with the courage to get up every morning and face a daunting economy since 2008, when we faced the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression in the United States. I know that all of you have worked very hard to keep this city moving, and Bob and I appreciate our small role in being a part of keeping this city on the move. I'd like to thank the people that have worked on the show and the people that have come this morning. Susan Touchborne was one of our guests. Susan Touchborne is a Hollywood independent film producer.
Where are you, Susan?
Susan, come up, please. And Sequoia Sierra is our wardrobe stylist. She's a young woman who's done a lot for our show. Sarah Sierra is her mother, a longtime worker in Hollywood in hair. Bob Jimenez, of course, my co-host, and he's going to speak as well. Paula Munoz, our producer. Jessica Just, our producer. Clark Perry, our production leader. Angelica Etumora in the Downey School of Makeup for supporting us today. She brought Priscilla Munoz, Veronica Soto, Kat Velazquez, Letitia Corona, Jessica Just, Corianca Kelcher. You might know Corianca. She was the, won an Alma Award when she was 15, the star of Terrace Malak's The New World. Corianca's here. Just astounding guests that we've had, true activists. And in Bob and I's view, we know that LA has a great future because of the incredible guests that we've had on L.A. Business Today. Also, Margita Thomas from the Gay and Lesbian Chamber of Commerce.
All right.
And the entire Kelcher family, Saskia, Kimona, and Anton. Quickly, Bob.
I think our two minutes are up, so I'm just going to say thank you all. This is the greatest city in the country. It has great potential. And the people who have appeared on the 100 shows that have been produced over the past, what, three years, have the same dream as all of you and as to see this city prosper. They are the heart-blood of this city. Viva LA, viva this council, and viva Channel 35 and 36. Thank you.
I just want to say, Bob, I want to thank you for being a role model for many who aspire to be on the screen, involved in media, reporting news, doing the work that you have done. You're an inspiration to many Latinos, Latinas, that we could say, Bob is there, Bob Jimenez. And I thank you for that inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, all of you. Oh, we do have Councilman Alarcon on the street. Councilman, just a minute, please. Councilman Alarcon.
I want to join with Councilmember Rosendahl in congratulating Bob and Sharon for their 100th show. I had the opportunity to work with Bob and Sharon in my office when they helped on one of my campaigns. And I can tell you, these are people who are dedicated not only to the business side, but to also the community side of a good business. And I know that that is their passion. I particularly am amazed at Bob's history because he broke one of the most important stories of our time, the contra gun sales by our government in Central America. Bob broke that story and paid a dear price for it. I believe that he lost his anchor job at NBC because of that. And, you know, but his passion is to tell the truth, and that's exactly what he did. And I believe our country is better for it. So, I want to thank you, Bob, for your service to our country, not only, I believe it's Vietnam, and also, you're telling the truth, having proven yourself as a hero, but also proving yourself as a patriot by exposing that story. And of course, Sharon and you have a common spirit, a kindred spirit. And together, I think you make a dynamic team, and that's why you've achieved this 100th show. So, congratulations, continued success, and keep telling it like it is.
Thank you, Council.
Congratulations. Thank you, Council. Councilman Zion, did you want to speak? Councilman Zion? One more speaker. They keep popping up.
Thank you. Bob, Sharon, Sharon, I remember you worked for Nate Holden. You were his media coordinator. And Bob, I remember you from your career. You were the, I think, the senior anchor at KNX News Radio. They talk, pardon me? KCBS, KCBS. But when you're the senior, that means that you've got that experience. Obviously, Bill and I have that experience along with Richard Alarcon. We got that senior member of the city council. We got all that experience. But I want to congratulate you both. I've known you for a long time in the real world, in this world of politics. And congratulations, you're obviously a great couple that works well together to make things happen for the great people of Los Angeles. So, congratulations, Bill. Thank you for bringing them forward and honoring them. You are a great couple, doing a lot of good for Los Angeles. God bless you both. Thank you for being here.
I believe that's everybody. Madam Clerk, what's next?
So, is she here today? Oh, she's not here. Talk to her staff, see what the staff says. Well, I understand that, but why wouldn't she, why wouldn't she, why does she have to go to committee?
Because anything that's transferred priority with others in the committee.
Councilman.
What'd they say? They haven't what?
They haven't responded.
Well, they're here, aren't they?
Members, as earlier, I thank you for that great recognition for the 150th anniversary of the Filipino independence. Here we have another great community activity from Los Angeles that is so important. The Thai Community Development Center graduates of 2013. Let's give them a big hand. And our Commissioner right here. I want to say, Chauncey, it's so good to see you. You've got everybody lined up perfectly. We're going to make it right to the point. The Thai Community Development Center in Hollywood is effective in trying to educate, empower, and excite the opportunity for people to make a difference and make change. In this part of Hollywood, the Thai community is centered. It's one of the towns. And Chauncey, I want you to give a few more words. I should say Commissioner, forgive me for that, as we talk about these great distinguished young people. Here we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Tom Labange, honorable city council members. I am so pleased to be here today, this morning, on this very auspicious occasion. I am so pleased to be here today, this morning, on this very auspicious occasion. I want to present to you the graduates of our civic engagement internship program called Action, Advocating Change Today Internship and Outreach Network. And among them are folks who probably have never set foot in City Hall before in their life until today. And we basically took a group of young people and older people from our community and abroad who was really interested in learning about the city. So they got to understand the city government process through this 16-week-long training. They also engaged in voter registration, voter education, get out the vote during the L.A. municipal elections. And we were a community partner with the City Elections Division, and they also did phone banking and robocalling to really encourage and mobilize Thai voters to go to the polls. Some of them on the team also served as poll monitors, et cetera. So it was a 16-week-long training, and we are so proud that they had completed this training, and they are actually graduating today. They deserve to exercise their right to the city, I guess, as I like to put it, and my staff would like to put it, because they will now be here to actually receive the acknowledgement, recognition for that 16-week-long internship program. And then following this, we'll have a graduation ceremony at the tower, and also some lunch. And I also want to--
The Tom Bradley Tower.
Yes, Tom Bradley Tower. And I also want to introduce my civic engagement team. They worked with a great team from the Thai CDC staff. The team members, could you please raise your hands and wave your hands so that folks could see? So they worked very hard to make this civic engagement program a success. So thank you very much.
And Chauncey Marrell is also one of our commissioners for the central area planning. Give Chauncey a big hand there.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chauncey. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
You've got the roll call. Real quick, call their names out.
Sure. So--
Just call their names.
Sure. The first person is Claire Rue.
All right, good. We'll get Claire. And next?
Next is Pila Lak Pomsuk. Next, Nikki Lukin-Bong.
Hi, Dave.
Next is Kopkao Field. Next is Marlena Rint, sorry, Vanessa McPong, Pacha Homvet. And yes, those are the ones. We have several missing, but--
Well, they're studied at the library. That's what we always say when they're not able to come and get this. Mr. President, these young people will make a difference in our community, and we certainly salute them, but we also salute the Thai Community Development Center for all that you work. Let's give them a big hand.
Thank you.
Good job. We're going to go in back and we'll make this presentation.
Congratulations, Chauncey, Commissioner. And to all our young people, thank you so much. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Item nine, cost special for cards.
Item nine. Mr. Walsh, item number nine. Just called Walsh.
John Walsh, for identification purposes only, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com. This is number nine. This concerns REIT, which stands for Rent Escrow Account Program. Here we have about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 landlords who have let something go on their property. They've corrected the cited REIT violations now, and their tenants will now pay directly to the landlord. Before that, they were paying to the city. This is an excellent program, and I'd like to say that it is always a pleasure when I speak in front of Mr. Reyes. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, what's the next item?
Item 10, cost special for cards.
Okay, I had stepped out of the room to take photographs, so I do want to make this announcement. Again, I'll be making it every day in council for a while, until I think people get it. General public comment, you can say just about what you want, as long as it pertains to the City of Los Angeles, something within our jurisdiction. When we get to the individual items, you must speak directly to the item. In the event that you go off the subject matter, you will forfeit your time. Okay, with that said, item 10, John Walsh.
Minute two, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We've passed 2 million in the last 20 months, 2 million service requests. This is number 10, proposed supplemental agreement for historic preservation consulting services. The city does a pretty good job of historic preservation. Is anybody out there from Philadelphia? Every single motion picture palace in the City of Philadelphia has been torn down. That's how bad it is in other cities. That's not unusual. Now, we've been, a good job here. I don't know any of these firms personally. Chattle Incorporated, Architectural Research Group, I don't know how much they have contributed to your campaigns--
No, okay.
--in any case, Hollywood.
That's it, his time is up. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item?
Item 12, cost special for cards.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for identification purposes only. This concerns the municipal elections, and this will make the election results of the City of Los Angeles complete. It says here, "We will have no impact on the general fund, as the funds necessary to conduct municipal elections are already included." So this is very important, declaring the results official. And we do live in a country where the elections are not usually crooked, except when Bushes are running. Notice I'm not stopped for that.
He is not--
Hollywood Highlands--
Off-topic, that's his time. Okay, item 13. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with on what?
And we'll go fourth with on this item. Now, item 13.
Item 13, cost special for cards.
Mr. Walsh. Okay, let's vote on this item, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item?
Item 14, cost special for cards.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns the 7th District's street furniture. The 7th District is Mr. Alarcon. We will very much miss Mr. Alarcon when he leaves. I've been in that district many, many times since I moved here in '76, and you've got some great street furniture. Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Bye.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item?
Item 16, cost special by Councilmember Coretts.
Mr. Coretts, we are now on item 16, sir.
I think we are now fine with this, and I just asked for an aye vote.
Okay, now, Madam Clerk, are we voting on this as amended?
No. No.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next?
Item 1, cost special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay, I have a card on that, Mr. Alarcon.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number 1 concerns application for determination of public conveniences for alcohol sales. What convenience means is, and this is for Walgreens, please stay away from Walgreens. All they do is sell liquor. They're not good neighbors compared to some of the other stores, neighborhood pharmacies. Alcohol sales, well, you know, we like pharmacies because they sell us drugs, but we need a prescription for them. I'd like to finish by saying, you know, here in L.A., we just don't have enough places to buy alcohol. Sometimes you've got to travel 50, 60, 70, as much as 80 feet in Hollywood to find another place for drugs. This one is in Mission Hills. If someone robs you, those people out there in Mission Hills, when somebody breaks into your home, they're probably drunk from what they got at the Walgreens.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon?
Councilmembers, first of all, this site is not Mission Hills, it is in North Hills. And I'm very familiar with this site. It's a relatively new development that has a number of retail stores that have really eliminated a blight on that particular corner prior to the development of this site. This particular Walgreens, it does not meet the Caldera definition of the number of liquor outlets in the area, so it has a relatively low impact. Although it is a high-crime area, because the site is well-maintained and has security, and finally, let me say that I checked with the LAPD. That's why I held the matter. I wanted to call them, and the vice squad says that this should not be a problem in this particular site. So for that reason, I feel it's fine to make the finding of public convenience in this city.
Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
To general public comment.
Arturo, and I can't pronounce the last name. Do we have anybody in here named Arturo? It could be Garcia. Arturo Garcia.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, you certainly heard give a big speech Wednesday. No more 10-20. We're not going to start these meetings 20 minutes late. They started this meeting 34 minutes late, 34 minutes late. Next meeting, an hour late. Dollhouse Dude is not here today. Now, the rumor is that Herb called Immigration and got him removed from the country. I don't know if that's true. Maybe he'll like to talk about it. But unfortunately, I have a birth certificate. You can't get me out of this country. I would like to say that the mayor, we now have, I want everyone to start the countdown. The official countdown starts today, Friday, June 14th. He's got 16 more days as the mayor. And Garcetti is going around with his civic rebirth plan. Ladies and gentlemen, stop me now if what I'm saying is not true. The mayor of this city on July 1st has, his name is not Eric Garcetti, it's his daddy. The daddy is the mayor. Eric plays the role of the mayor, this walking around in front of the cameras, all the hard work, and he should be working 18 hours a day to hit the ground running. He is playing it the way he played it on Closer. And anybody knows, in this city, if you want a job, you don't go to Eric, you go to Gil Garcetti. He is the co-mayor of the city, and when the L.A. Times finally says it, everyone will say, "Oh, we always knew it. You heard it first here." HollywoodHighlands.org, you have two mayors in this city, two, two mayors in one, and they're both worthless.
Okay, Noel Weiss, followed by Brian Barajas, followed by Mr. Jones.
Yes. Morning, Council. Couple of quick items. Number one, I think the votes that you just took, you only had nine members in the chamber, and I don't think any of the votes that you took were lawful under Rule 25. Mr. Weezer and--
You're wrong. You're wrong, Noel.
Well, respectfully, it's my time, Mr. President. Number two, I want to note for the record, I don't think, again, whether or not Mr. Englander's conduct today in public safety and denying public comment due to the lack of a quorum, I don't see that anywhere in the rules. City Attorney didn't say anything. I think the public should have the right to comment, regardless of whether or not there's a forum, a quorum, because you certainly heard testimony relative to the items. And if we're going to have matters heard, then the public comment should basically be heard, and it's not right to spike public comment that way. And if that's becoming the policy of this council, then respectfully, the policy of this council should be reversed to allow for reasonable and fair public comment. Third, 25 million gallons of butane in San Pedro. Mr. Busciano has done nothing significant or consequential to basically deal with that problem. That represents still an ongoing and continuing public safety hazard. We need Mr. Busciano at a minimum to do two things right immediately. One, introduce the same resolution that Janice Hahn introduced in September of 2010, which basically calls on the federal government to assist the city in terms of providing adequate safety and security. We're socializing these losses on the backs of the people of L.A. No discussion, no meaningful discussion on it, and it's wrong. And secondly, Mr. Busciano has on his website what amounts to propaganda from Rancho, who basically owns this facility. That public website is not owned by Mr. Busciano, it's owned by the people. This is a public trust. Rancho has a lot of lobbyists, they have a lot of lawyers. They don't need Mr. Busciano to be their mouthpiece and to expose the city to liability with this kind of a situation where a one-sided presentation is presented on his official website is not right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barajas, followed by Mr. Jones.
Okay, yeah, this is good. Well, I'll just make a clear statement. I love doing this. We're going to kill the British Empire. That's a fact. The Republic of the United States is about to be revived, and anybody who gives a damn about that, good. Anybody who doesn't, well, you're loyal to the Crown, obviously. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I have before you a Nwapa program, North American Water and Power Alliance. This is the project program under John F. Kennedy, and if Robert Kennedy wouldn't have been assassinated, according to his letter to Frank Moss, Frank Moss introduced the Senate Concurrent Resolution 55, well, Nwapa would have been actually built, and the water system from Alaska through Canada into the United States and above Mexico, we would actually have replenished the water resources that we're now losing. Now, obviously, this is the British Empire at work. The killing and the massacre that's going around the world and about to continue in the United States, it's British, well, not the British people, but it's just the empire. Now, empire works, it's very simple how it works. If you're stupid enough to pass policies like the Dodd-Frank and not pass policies like Glass-Steagall, like FDR did-- like Glass-Steagall, like FDR did, in order to destroy the Nazis, in order to industrialize the United States, which is a principle according to Alexander Hamilton's 1791 Report on Manufacturing, you're committing treason!
Keep your voice down.
I'm sorry, I'm just being American.
No, you're just being loud. Keep your voice down.
Are you responding to me, Mr. Person? Okay, thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is the Nwapa program put for credit system—that's going to pay for it—and a Glass-Steagall HR 129.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is gone, Mr. Jones. Yes, Mr.—
For the record, Mr. President, the public is not entitled to ear-splitting loudness.
Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. Mr. City Attorney, that's not true. I can demonstrate my conviction, and this is what my mother said. Not only by the very words that I say, she said, "Make him painful," but I can demonstrate my conviction under that context as loud as I want to. My dad didn't crap about his right to pursue happiness. All he cared about was his right to pursue his government. I'm going to take the law into my own hands. There's not a police officer in this country that could legally tell you you cannot take the law into your own hands. Meaning, the connotation is a weapon. This is—I just took the law into my own hands. They don't want you to read it. Mr. Weston, this is for the governor. You're moot. It's the same violation of martial law that the governor failed to do on Occupy. It says right here, proclamation for the state of insurrection, and it goes, "Can have rebellion, insurrection, turmoil, or riot, forcibly resist the law. By any officers of any county, city, are unable or who have failed for any reason to enforce the laws, the governor may by proclamation declare any part of the state of insurrection." Where was he at October 1st, 2011, at 10:32 p.m.? The state police should have removed those occupiers. My life has been about one period.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our general— I don't have a card on you. Does anybody have a card on—you speak if you've—you submitted it after we started public comment. You have to submit it before. Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, what is before this council now?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements? Mr. LaBange.
Just wanted to let you know, everybody, today is Flag Day, this day where we—the American flag is saluted, which it was done. It was initiated in 1916 by President Woodrow Wilson in proclamation that established the 14th day of June every year as Flag Day. So I just wanted to remember, everybody, throughout all our public buildings, and what is so proud, whether it's a library, fire station, police station, our county or office, state building, the flag is there to let you know it's a public building for all to come and receive the guidance necessary, help and encouragement that we're to provide. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Englander.
Yes, today is an official city holiday, or at least it should be, because Nicole Burnson, the proud daughter of Hal Burnson and my deputy chief of staff, is celebrating her 21st birthday, I think 21st birthday, today, and we all wish her a very happy birthday.
Okay, what's before us now? Okay, now we move into adjourning motions. If I could get everyone in the council chamber to please rise. Adjourning motions, Mr. LaBange.
I think we should adjourn in memory of Esther Williams, Olympian who missed the Olympics because of the 1940 Games, actress, native of Los Angeles. I ask we adjourn in memory of Esther Williams. And also, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Harry Lewis. Harry Lewis opened up Hamburger Hamlet, another Los Angeles success story, and a contributor to the well-being of our community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that the City Council adjourn in memory of Paula Lynn Katz, who is a longtime resident and activist of the Catherine Square neighborhood in my district. She was also an Emmy-winning costumer and union organizer for Local Union 705. She was also active with Local 75 and Costume Designers Guild 892. She had a 40-year career in the television and motion picture industry as a costumer and costume designer, and she worked on iconic films like Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid, MASH, The Green Mile, the Batman films, and a number of television shows as well. She was a winner of four Emmy Awards and was also on the Board of Governors of the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences and a delegate to the County Federation of Labor. She mentored many young people in the industry, and she was loved in her neighborhood, loved by her family and friends, and she will be missed. Paula is survived by her brother Benjamin, their children, Jolie and Gabriel Katz, her stepsister Julia Rosenberg, niece Adrian Rosenberg, and nephew Kevin Rosenberg. And may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Maggie Fanoir, who lost her battle to cancer in June 2013. She grew up in Pennsylvania and New Jersey. In the late '60s, she's moved to Los Angeles with her husband, where she subsequently earned a bachelor degree from UCLA and a master's degree in urban planning from USC, all while raising her young daughter Rebecca. Maggie was a fierce advocate of North University Park and West Adam Community, founder of Community Stakeholder Participation Organization, Plan Check NC. For many years, she worked for various planning firms and several high-profile projects, including the inception of the Los Angeles first metro rail line, Staples Centers, Hollywood and Highland. After retiring from professional urban planning, Maggie devoted herself to empowering neighborhoods citywide to engage with the city government through community-based planning. She was an early and active participant in the Grassroots Empowerment Congress and an original elected member of the local neighborhood council. She founded Plan Check NC to help educate and empower neighborhood stakeholders and promote participation in neighborhood planning and land use issues throughout the city. In 2006, she was selected as Pioneer Woman of the Year in the 8th District and was also a long-term member of the North University Park Design Review Board. She's survived by her husband and host of family members. Memorial service is pending. We also ask that we adjourn in memory of Yolanda Durrell, who was born in May 1959 and was 54 years of age when she passed away in June 2013. Yolanda worked for the Southern California Edison located in Rosemeat. For that, she spent many years as supervisor in a Torrance-based CCH computer tax. She's a voted member since childhood—excuse me—of the First Bethany Missionary Baptist Church, leading her many talents to the program and services. She loved gospel music and possessed a beautiful singing voice. Yolanda was mom to many and had an open-door policy. Her house was home to many young people who were guided by her keen ability to impart knowledge to all, all while encouraging them to prepare for the future. If you hung around long enough, you were certain to be ascribed a nickname which demonstrated her love for you. Yolanda survived by her husband Gary, children Carrie, Terrence, Marina, grandson Carrie, and a host of family members. Funeral services are pending.
Thank you. Any more adjourning motions? Members, this meeting's adjourned.